Well, welcome, everybody, and certainly our new streaming live audience and everybody watching on TV. Welcome to a meeting of the Ontario City Council. Anyone wishing to speak who's here has to fill out a blue slip. We do not have any, although we do have one that was sent in. In accordance with state law, this will be a remark that is relative to the city of Ontario. Due to the space in the Ontario City Council chambers brought on by the current issues and the coronavirus, we obviously have everybody here separated as in accordance with the rules of the law. So our first order of business is a roll call. Madam City Clerk?
And thank you, Mayor Lee. On the record, we reflect that everyone is present with the exception of Mr. Bowman, who is on an excused absence.
Okay, then we have our Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Protem Prada and our invocation by my good friend Pastor Mike Gercioli of Calvary Chapel, Ontario.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Lee, on city council members, ladies and gentlemen, the Bible tells us that all things work together for the good, and that can be kind of hard to understand at times, but just keep in mind, it doesn't say all things are good, but it says all things work together for the good. And so what we have to understand, if you truly believe in God, that God is seated upon the throne. He's on that place of authority where he governs the affairs of man. And that being the case, what do we do? We need to be a people who pray. We need to humble ourselves, and we need to seek his face out. If you don't know God, if you don't have a relationship with him, you can read the Gospel of John, Chapter 3. But we see everything that's going on with all of the craziness and all, and it seems like things are spiraling out of control. But according to my Bible, they're not spiraling out of control. Things are falling into place. There's an obscure prophet in the Old Testament, Habakkuk. He was going through things a lot harder than we are, and in the midst of that difficulty, he came to realization. He says in Habakkuk, Chapter 3, verse 17, "Though the fig tree may not blossom, nor fruit be on the vines, though the labor of the olive may fail, and the fields yield no food; though the flock be cut off from the fold, and there be no hurt in the stalls, yet I will rejoice in the Lord. I will join the God of my salvation. The Lord God is my strength; he will make my feet like deer's feet, and he will make me walk on my high heels." Father, once again, we just thank you, God, for this opportunity to gather together, to meet. And Lord, there's a lot of difficult things that are going on. And Father, I pray that you would give our government, the elected officials here in this room, give them wisdom and understanding how to best minister to this community. I lift them up to you and just pray, God, that you would give them wisdom even tonight. I pray for our authorities on the state level and national level as well, but I also pray for the citizens and our responsibility. And so, Father, just watch over our caregivers and first responders. I pray for our doctors and hospital workers and all. I pray for our firemen and police departments that you would watch over them and protect them, keep them from this virus. I pray for ambulance drivers and so many others. But right now, we just looked up tonight, and God, that you would just use it for your glory, for your will, in Jesus' So actually, we did have somebody come on up, and we're going to go into our public comments portion of the meeting, and we have DeAndre Lampkin. Where'd he go? He fell out a blue slip and left? He's here. Yeah, he's probably...
Mr. Mayor, while we're waiting for Mr. Lampkin, it probably deserves to be noted that the one bit of public comment that we got over the email of the city's website had to do with the city's response to the coronavirus epidemic, and much or all of the information that was requested is going to be covered in Chief Geick's presentation to the council, just for the viewing audience.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll just continue with Mr. Lampkin, who is now with us.
Good evening, members of council. I was actually looking for my notes for today, and I actually wanted to talk to you guys about census. This is a reminder for the residents. In the midst of everything that's going on with COVID-19, I couldn't help but think about as federal funding is being distributed across all the cities and the states, what would happen if not enough federal funding was given to the city of Ontario or to the state of California because we weren't accurately counted? And there is an assumption that our numbers aren't actually what they are, because we've grown so much since 2010, when the last decennial happened. So I just want to remind residents that we are in the season of the census. By now, beginning in March 12th, residents have already began to receive in the mail their opportunity to respond to the census online. There's also instructions for residents to respond to the census by phone and also by mail, if they choose to do so in writing. Residents will also receive reminders about the census, I believe, beginning March 21st, and giving them an opportunity again to respond by phone and by mail as well, for those who are not comfortable with responding via the Internet, using the survey that's done on the census website. The reason why I'm bringing this up again is because my foundation serves as the co-chair for the Ontario Complete Count Committee, and we spent a great deal of time over the last couple of months getting the word out about the census, and we kind of hit a little bit of a snafu, because it was our intent to utilize a couple of facilities throughout the city to get people to come in and actually do the census online. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we will not be able to do that. We've had to cancel some of those plans for the month of March and possibly for the month of April. So please, if you have not done so already, please check your mail. Look for that white envelope with that blue paper inside that is inviting you to participate in the census. We are trying...
One minute remaining.
We are trying our best to get residents to self-report. We want to remind residents that their answers are, in fact, confidential, per Title 13. It is something that is required by the U.S. Constitution, so that federal funding can be equally distributed to the various municipalities and the states. And also, it allows for residents to have a voice in the city of Ontario. It determines how many U.S. representatives you guys have in the government offices. So please, if you have not done so already, please open those envelopes, and let's get the census completed. Thank you.
Thank you, DeAndre. So having heard the subject of the other, the letter that will be addressed shortly, we'll move on to agenda review and announcements to Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The city had declared a state of emergency on Saturday morning, March 14th. Pursuit to the law, that action needs to be ratified by the city council. Because it occurred after the posting of the agenda, we would ask that you add it to the agenda as an urgency matter. That requires a four-fifths vote. Seeing as we have four council members, that means that we would need a unanimous vote. If the council were to do that, then we could take up the matter of the ratification of the resolution, and then also be able to listen to a presentation from Chief Geick and ask whatever questions that the council saw fit. So we would ask your indulgence in that, sir.
The item is moved by Councilmember Wapner, second by Mayor Protem Prada, and seeing no opposition, we'll go ahead and move forward with this. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. I would ask Chief Geick to come forward along with our new administrative officer for the Ontario Fire Department, Jordan Vilwak, and that will give some comments to you.
The subject, also, just to make sure everybody understands, is the resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency for the 2020 coronavirus pandemic.
Yes, sir. Honorable Mayor and city council members, we wanted to do a quick little presentation regarding the COVID-19 response plan. On March 11th, the World Health Organization declared the COVID-19 as a global pandemic. When we did this slide, this slide was done yesterday, and it said there were 3,700 cases in the United States. It's actually changed. As I walked over here today, I checked those numbers, and it was closer to 5,900 confirmed cases in the United States, not 69 deaths, and it was up to 97 as I walked over here today. So staff has developed a three-tier plan to respond to the pandemic. City Manager Ochoa has been acting as the Director of Emergency Services for the city and proclaimed a local emergency, like he mentioned, on March 14th of this year. The plan... Hold on a second, sorry. The response plan is divided into three response phases. Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3. Phase 1 is when we confirmed community spread into the United States. Obviously, that happened several weeks ago. Phase 2 is the plan phase that we're in currently, and that is confirmed case in San Bernardino County and/or local emergency proclamation. Phase 3 is something that we're anticipating potentially in the next few days, depending on what happens, and that is going to be when we have a confirmed community spread in Ontario or contiguous city or confirmed city employee case. Like we talked about Phase 1, I'm just going to briefly touch on a few of the things that we had to. A lot of the things in Phase 1, we were planning and considering and working through and just really discussing with staff in the whole city about how we were going to gear up for this pandemic. One of the things we were looking at was the sick policies throughout the city, telecommuting policies, public gatherings, continuity of services. Continuity of services is what are we going to do to try to provide the services to the citizens of Ontario the best we can if this were to happen? A lot of these things in Phase 1 were really more of considerations and just more of the planning phase. Phase 1 also included PPE. We began to look at our stocks for protective equipment for first responders, other people that are forward-facing in the city, police officers and the like. Information sharing, Emergency Operations Center was not activated, and then an emergency declaration was being considered at that point.
Chief?
Yes?
Could you just quickly, could you explain PPE for those in the audience?
Sure. It's basically the protection equipment that we use in the fire service, the masks, the gowns, the eye protection, the gloves. So those are the...
E.
There you go. So it's personal protective equipment.
Good. Thank you.
So Phase 2, like I mentioned, is our current phase, which is confirmed case in San Bernardino County and/or declared local emergency. We have two cases that are confirmed in the county currently, and obviously, there's with the testing and all of those things being implemented as we speak, we're anticipating more cases to come, especially with the size of our county. So with that, we really started looking into the sick policies, suspected cases for people that work in the city were self-quarantined for 14 days, basically sent home. Essentially, what was going on with that is if people were showing up sick, we were asking them to go home and to not infect other people. Obviously, the anxiety of people were coming up, and so, and we had very good results with that. And the travel policies, we started to look at. Obviously, we have a lot of training that other people do within the city, and we began to look at those policies. And I know, speaking from the Ontario Fire Department standpoint, and I think it's pretty much citywide, we've looked at reducing our travel or canceling our travel that was made in March and all the way through April as of right now. Telecommuting, again, those were some of the policies that we were looking at and looking at where are those people that are working in the city, where that makes sense. Not every person that works in the city will have the option of doing telecommuting because of the type of work that they do, but we're working through all those other options as well. Public gathering, those are some of the things that you're noticing today, obviously, with the public gathering, but we'll talk about that a little bit more in when we talk about Phase 3. Again, continuity of services. Consider implementation of alternative services. Everyone in the city has been looking at and working on different alternatives to try to still meet the needs of our citizens the best we can. The EOC was a virtual activation, which means that we fired up all of the web EOC, and we're starting to look at, we have communications with the County of San Bernardino through the web EOC platform, and that's going on right now. Phase 3, this is going to be a confirmed community spread in Ontario or contiguous city or confirmed city employee case, which we are not in this phase right now. This is a phase that we're planning on. Sick policy, employees would be subject to screening possibly. Travel policies would obviously be canceled across the board. Public gathering, obviously, the county just came out, and I'll talk about that in a second, and they've, the county just came out with a, the health officer from the county just ordered cancellation for public gatherings as we were walking over here today. So that's something we can discuss as well. Additionally, the EOC will be activated 24/7, and we'll also be looking at establishing some key staff positions in the EOC. Yes, sir?
Once again, EOC is the emergency...
The Operations Center.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm...
I know you're trying to...
Oops, sorry. So with the EOC, the activated, like I said, we're looking at activating that 24/7. One of the other things we're considering is looking at staffing some key positions in the EOC. We're also looking at establishing a hotline setup for the public to be able to call in. Obviously, we would, with some of the staff not being able to do some field work and whatnot, we'll probably be transitioning some of the folks over to those positions in the EOC if we can. Possible next steps, we're going to be obviously continuing monitoring federal state guidelines and directives, possibly mandating business closures, curfews, and changes to operations, depending upon state and county closures and guidelines from them. Communicate with community and customers, obviously engage with community through all the varieties of media and social media that we have, and maintain continuity of services as applicable and allowed. So those are kind of the next steps that we're looking at. The obvious action request of the city council was to ratify the emergency proclamation today, which this is really going to enhance the ability of the city to mobilize local resources, coordinate interagency response... resources, coordinate inter-agency response, accelerate procurement to vital supplies, and seek reimbursement if possible. One of the other things is also, this order is only going to be good for 30 days, from what I understand. And that's kind of the down-and-dirty of the phases that we're working on right now. Again, we're working on phase two, and we're preparing for phase three as we speak. Is there any questions from Mayor or council?
No, thank you. I think you did a great job. We just have to decide whether or not we're going to approve and adopt this, right?
That's true.
Okay, so, I'll entertain any further questions or comments or a motion to approve.
I'll start, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for City Manager. Does this give you increased signature authority as well?
It does give me the authority to pull in the resources necessary, sir. Yes.
I'll move it.
Okay. Second. Moved by Councilmember Wapner, second by Councilmember Valencia. Opposition? No, we just said that we were going to, we're going to put it on the agenda. Now, it's to actually move the item. Okay, so... Pull your microphone over and say it now.
Well, I'm just going to say what I have to say here. So, my job for a living, as I work for the LA County Health Department, I'm a public health nurse and very involved in what's going on here. And I'm thankful to staff for everything that you're doing. I'm truly appreciative. But what's really frustrating me here is the San Bernardino County Health Department itself and the lack of direction that it's giving to the cities, the faith-based community, and everybody else. I'm immensely proud of the LA County Health Department and the direction that we've been giving to the hospitals, the daycares, the preschools, the faith-based community. Today, I got off of an excellent phone call for cities and city managers. Just every question they could ask that was answered. I'm just so proud of what we're doing on that side of the fence, and I only wish it could happen over here. So, I, you know, so, for, you guys need guidance or something, please go to the LA County Public Health website and look to see what they're advocating and saying. I, the other thing that I need the community to know is that when it comes to your city, our budget, 70% of it is, you know, for our public safety people, our police and our fire department. The other 30% goes to your recreation department, your library, your parks, your streets, your trees, your planning department, the water, the trash. So, when it comes to a city budget, it's really hard for us to work health into it, but we do the best we can. We offer exercise classes, we offer cooking classes, we redid our general plan to include a healthy element in it so that we're offering bike paths, and we have walking paths at most of our parks now, along with youth exercise equipment and adult exercise equipment. So, cities do the best they can with the budgets that they have to offer you the kind of healthy lifestyle that we'd like you to have. It's the county that's supposed to be offering you the decent healthcare when it comes to that and/or if you have private healthcare. Today, I found out for the older generation, that's 65 and older, Kaiser, you don't get to walk into the building anymore. My parents have an appointment tomorrow. So, they have to call when they get into the parking lot that they're here, and that somebody is going to come down from the building and come see them and then let them go up to their appointment. So, and then your doctor's offices too. So, like if you're, you think you have the symptoms, call your doctor, talk to your doctor, let them know what's going on. If you don't have a doctor, call the emergency room, tell them what's going on. They're going to want you, when you walk in that door, to go to the window and tell them your symptoms because they don't want you sitting in that waiting room with everybody else, possibly infecting everybody else. So, there's a lot to go on here, there's a lot to say here, there's a lot to try to be healthy with. And, you know, I brought my Kleenex and my hand sanitizer, you know, I mean, do the best you can to protect, you know, the people that you're with. I don't want anybody here to get sick. I appreciate the audience here, where we were sitting everybody at a good six feet distance away from everything. I mean, we're doing everything that we can. I just need the county to do everything that they can. So, that's my two cents, and there you go.
Got any more? That's it? All right, good. Well, there you go. That's what I work with there. She's passionate about this, you know, we all are. It's not, it's serious, it's not, it's not funny. And we've been fielding calls and messages and texts, and all of us have, and with people who are in fear. And a lot of this is certainly understandable. I will tell you that I've been on the phone with myself with major grocery chains, and they tell me that their warehouses are fully stocked and get restocked, that the rush to the grocery store and all of this frenzy buying isn't really necessary. If people would just calm down, they'd find that the supply is fine. It's just getting the trucks to the stores to refill what was, you know, taken in a frenzy the day before. And so, there really isn't this supply chain deficiency in the United States. We are a well-supplied country for the, those needs. But getting that message for people to believe it is difficult, if not impossible. The other thing is, there are a lot of people out there trying to say that this is, that the virus isn't that dangerous at all, and they try to compare it to other flus. They don't have all the facts, and I just want to tell you, I don't care who you listen to or what blog you saw or what anybody on YouTube said, this is the real deal, but we're doing everything that we know how to make sure that we don't allow it to spike beyond control. That's what all this social distancing is about, making sure that it runs out of people. And, I mean, basically, that's what it is, and that it given us time as human beings to find a vaccine or a cure. The other thing is, I just want to bring it to everybody's attention, water. I am absolutely not in any fear about water. People are buying water and toilet paper, but water like it's crazy. And, you know, I have a faucet at home and many different rooms in my house, and even one in the garage. And you have great water in this community because not only are we very close to the source, and you saw how white the mountains were today, that's nice, clean, fresh water, and it comes right down to our aquifer, and it's pumped out and it's processed. And we have some of the best water in the country, right here in Ontario, so much so that two bottling companies get their water locally, you know? Arrowhead from over there and Niagara from right here. There is no real need, and I'm telling you this with all my heart, I drink our tap water, and I don't worry about a shortage because we have great water. We don't need to be frenzied about this. But, as Debbie is saying, there's also the need for us to be very careful in public and to isolate ourselves and to do the best we can for that social distancing so that we can remain safe. And there is, there is a certain population or populations that are more susceptible to the virus, but we're protecting them. I mean, I might get it and get over it, but then if I took it to my mother, who's 88 and lives in a home, or my wife's mother, who's 87 and lives with us, then we're going to be heartbroken. Those are the risks and the issues. You can take it to others, even if you were to survive, you would probably survive if you're healthy, more than likely. And these are just the issues that we're facing, and we're doing the best that we can to finish this well. And as Debbie is upset with the county, I just want to, I want to express that the City of Ontario is doing, I just got to say, more than most. We were on a conference call with the county, but then again, we were on another conference call with a nationally-known expert on this particular item, and this afternoon, and it was very educational. And we don't take it lightly, and we're reacting, and you've just heard our chief explain what our safety services are doing. So, we don't take it, it's no joke, and you can see it here tonight, and we're going to continue to fight this with everything we got. Right? Right? Okay. So, we had a motion, and now it's just up to us to say yea or nay. Yea? 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 So, moved and so ordered. You have your permission, Mr. City Manager. Okay, well, thank you for going through that with us. We're going to move on a consent calendar. All matters under consent calendar will be enacted by one motion, and there are no blue slips written, so I'll entertain a motion from the council. Okay. Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Prada, second by Councilmember Valencia. Any opposition to that? Seeing none, so moved and so ordered. That takes us to public hearings. We have a CFD and a script that we need to go through. It's sometimes tedious, but it's legal. So, this is the time and place for a public hearing to inquire about and consider the formation of City of Ontario Community Facilities District Number 53, Taveldi Facilities, and the levy of special taxes in the Community Facilities District, and the need to incur bonded indebtedness with the CFD. Madam City Clerk, has a notice of this hearing been given in accordance with the Mello-Ruse Community Facilities Act.
Yes, Mayor Leon. Notice of public hearing was published at least seven days prior to the opening of the hearing, as required by the Mello-Ruse Facilities Act.
Okay, so, before I formally open the hearing, are there any interested persons who wish to file a written protest that will not be presented by the author of the protest at the hearing? If so, the protest must be filed with the city clerk now. Well, seeing nobody rushing to the city clerk, and there's no written protest, the hearing is now officially open, and I will receive comments, questions, and any other oral protests from any interested persons. Are there any, and there are no blue cards, as we've already said, to speak on this matter? So, seeing none at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And because there are zero persons registered to vote within the territory of the Community Facilities District, as certified by the registrar of voters, the vote shall be by the landowners of the Community Facilities District. As such, the landowners have waived the notice and election requirements in connection with the act. I will now consider action items A, B, and C. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. This is a resolution of the City Council approving the formation of City of Ontario Communities Facility District Number 53, Taveldi Facilities, authorizing the levy of a special tax within the Community Facilities District and establishing appropriations limits for the Community Facilities District. And for item B, this is a resolution of...
Okay. Agree? Okay, thank you. So, the results?
Could you guys vote on this, Mr. Lee?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. So, I'll entertain a motion. A, B, and C? Motion by Prada, second by Valencia. Any opposition? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Now the results. Thank you.
Mayor, we have two ballots, both in favor of formation of the district.
So, the results of the election being in favor of the formation of the Community Facilities District, the levy of special taxes, the establishment, the appropriations limit, we may now proceed with the remaining actions for the Community Facilities District and consider action item D. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ontario declaring the results of special election and directing the recording of a notice of special tax lien.
So, do I have a motion for action item D? Okay, motion by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Valencia. Any opposition to that? Seeing none, action item D has passed. We may now proceed for the next action item this evening for the Community Facilities District and consider action item E. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. This is the introduction and waiver of further reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ontario, California, levying special taxes within the City of Ontario Community Facilities District Number 53, the Taveldi Facilities.
So, do I have a motion for action item E? Motion, second by Valencia. Any opposition? Seeing none, so action item E has passed. We may now proceed with the final action item for the Community Facilities District and consider action item F. Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Ontario, authorizing the execution and delivery and acquisition funding agreement with LS Ontario LLC.
Do I have a motion for action item F? Motion by Valencia, second by Prada. Any opposition? Seeing none. Action item F has passed. That concludes the proceedings for this evening concerning the formation of the City of Ontario Community Facilities District Number 53, Taveldi Facilities. Glad you tuned in online to see that. That's great stuff. All right. So... Boy, that was long. Item number 16, Madam City Clerk?
Thank you. This is a public hearing to consider the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority, or the CMFA, in an amount not to exceed $25 million to finance and refinance the acquisition, construction, improvement, and equipping of certain residential living, assisted living, and skilled nursing components of a continuing care retirement community located at 1950 South Mountain Avenue and the properties adjacent thereto, all for the same use owned and operated by the Inland Christian Home. Notice of public hearing has been given. Affidavit sub-compliance are on file, and we have no written communications.
So, we'll open the public hearing, and we don't have any written communications here, and anybody here to speak to the item. And seeing none, so I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to pass by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Valencia. Any opposition to that? Seeing none. So moved and so ordered. I think it's great that we do something to help a facility that helps our senior citizens, and they do a great job there, too. So, we have an administration report and discussion and an action. Mr. City Manager, you want to bring that up?
Yes, sir. This merely is an item that is for the design-build contract with TransTech for what will be a 350-car parking garage to be located on what we refer to as the C block, which is the block of North Euclid Avenue between B, or I'm sorry, C and D Streets on the east side. That will accompany a 145-unit apartment building that is anticipated, that really will hearken the renaissance of downtown Ontario. So, what we have here is a $105,000 contract. That's merely for TransTech to set up the RFP process for design-build and execute it.
Okay, so, I'll entertain a motion or a conversation from council on this issue. So, motion to accept, and second by Councilmember Valencia. I'd just like to add that it's a much-needed project for downtown. One of the things I hear all the time is there's no parking, or we got to park way in the back, especially for concerts in the park and things like that. So, believing that that's going to come back, I think this is a good idea. So, I too am okay with it. Any opposition? Okay, seeing none. It's approved. We move to staff matters. Mr. Choa?
Sir, I would only ask the, and remind our residents and business partners to regularly tune in to our website at ontario.ca.gov to receive all the updates as they pertain to the city's actions regarding our response to the coronavirus.
Okay. Let's move on to council matters. Mr. Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to touch base with what Deandre had to say. You know, in Ontario, they said at the last census that we were, there was an undercount of our residents in Ontario. And look at this epidemic that's going on right now. When the federal government needs to disperse funds to the cities, that's what, that's the direct connection right there, guys. It's very important to be counted so that, God forbid, something else like this happens again, and chances are, unfortunately, the world we live in, it might happen. happens again and chances are unfortunately, the world we live in, it might happen. We are able to get those funds and have them allocated out to the community. So that's why, um, you know, please cooperate with, uh, the census. Title 13 protects your information. Nobody's going to come knocking at your door to, uh, to find you after the fact because it's not, that information is not shared. Also, um, you know, with this epidemic, take care of each other, you know? Reach out. This is a time, if you're at home and we're all, um, have time at home, reach out. This is a time to, to call your neighbors, um, talk to your neighbors and especially if you have some seniors that are your neighbors, check in on them. Make sure they're okay because maybe they can't get out. Maybe they're scared and they don't want to get out. Make sure they have the necessities. If not, reach out. Also, um, you know, I've been with the Sheriff's Department 30 years. I've seen a couple of catastrophes that we've had to work through over those years and unfortunately, this is the time when we actually get scammers that come out and prey on our, and tug on our heartstrings and take advantage of the good people because there's a lot of good people out there, want to do good things and help one another. So make sure that if you're going to help, make sure it's a credible source that you're helping because, believe me, they're going to be out there, they're going to be trying to take advantage of, um, the good-hearted people that we have in our community. That's all.
Mr. Wattner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to take an opportunity to thank the city manager and the staff for their timely and really effective response to what's going on. I can tell you that as a resident of Ontario, I can certainly sleep and rest peacefully knowing that, um, Mr. Choa and his staff and our public safety folks are really responding appropriately and taking good care of us. Thank you.
Ms. Parada?
I do, it's staff here at the city, staff at the school districts, too awesome for words. So like at the Ontario Moncler School District, the kids are not going without food. Um, I was just trying to look up Gina's Facebook page here. So Ontario Moncler School District, they're serving the brunch, yeah, there you go, breakfast and lunch together from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the school site. So if you drive in there, you'll be able to pick up the breakfast and the lunch for your kids. Um, also too, Chaffey High School and the other high schools are doing the same thing. And I don't exactly remember here, I think our senior centers are giving their lunch from Tuesday through Thursday and I can't remember the time.
You know, let me, that's an important point. Can I just, if it's okay with the council-
Sure, sure, sure.
-ask Helen just to give us a, a quick update on that?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. So, um, the beginning of this week, our food service provider, Family Services Association, provided boxed lunches that we handed out and people took with them to take home. They provided, um, sets of five frozen lunches to seniors today and will do so tomorrow. And we also have boxed lunches to supplement. So, if we run out of those frozen, um, we'll be able to hand out boxed lunches to people so they won't go hungry.
Very good.
Good.
And I also know that there's a couple nonprofits that have been getting together to figure out how they're going to, um, work, maybe helping out some of our residents in need. I'm sure more will be to come of that and I know that the city would like to maybe help in that a little bit too. And that's where my council colleague, Reuben, was talking about. Pay attention to your seniors. Um, I think what I heard too is that the seniors are actually afraid to like give somebody money that they're just going to walk away and not get their stuff back. So, if you have seniors on your street or you know of seniors, you know, go ahead, buy them what they want and, and help them out that way so that they, they don't go hungry. And for gosh's sake, guys, how much toilet paper can you have? You know, knock it, knock it off. And, um, just, just try to keep good to each other and help each other and, uh, we'll get through this. It's going to be a while though, we need to hunker down. If we can get all of ourselves inside the houses and keep the social distancing, I mean, we can make this curve flatten out real quick and get back to our normal lives, but we, we really got to take this seriously. Nothing like this has happened since the 19, what, 1919, 1920? It's been 100 years. So we're not used to this, we don't know about it. Um, so this is new for us and we just have to really try to do our best and, um, stay to ourselves and, and help our seniors out. So, thank you much.
Okay, uh, just to read something off, uh, the City of Ontario is currently in phase two of our four-phase preventive plan to fight the spread of the virus. Uh, the facilities are, these facilities are currently closed or altered hours of operation. All city-owned fitness centers at city facilities are closed. All community centers, including the senior center, libraries and the Ontario Museum in History and Art, closed. City Hall is currently open to the public 7:30 to 5:30 PM. You can access helpful information on the city's website is, I'll say it slow, www.ontario.ca, that's one word, ontario.ca.gov. You can get updates and information on the epidemic in our region if you log into www.ontario.ca/coronavirus. And for those of you who do not use social media or computers, you can call City Hall at 909-395-2000 during normal business hours from 7:30 to 5:00 PM. Uh, we're partnering with the agencies from the governor, the CDC, California Department of Public Health and, I didn't want to say it, Debbie, but San Bernardino County. Here's one thing that's very important to people. If your employment has been affected by the recent coronavirus pandemic, visit Employment, the Employment Development Department or EDD at www.EDD.ca.gov/. That's one of those things that I, I've gotten a lot of calls or messages mostly, uh, on social media asking what's happening because I'm a teacher and I was, I can't go to work and, uh, and I guess maybe there's not, oh, in every district, they're not communicating, communicating well. Other people because they're in, uh, the service end of industry are getting laid out, the hotels aren't doing so much and the restaurants aren't doing anything and, and so forth. And so it's just trickling down all through the community and people are losing their jobs and they're worried about losing their, their housing and all of these things. And there's already been some moratoriums rolled out by the state and federal governments, where people can't lose their place and they can't lose, uh, everything from their job. But if you go, um, onto that site at www.EDD.ca.gov, you can find out more about your particular issue. And then, um, I do want to thank Cardenas Market because, yeah, I did contact him a couple of days ago and, uh, the whole issue of getting seniors the opportunity to shop, uh, it, it was really out there and as you've already heard and they're, they're afraid of being, you know, caught up in this massive movement and how are they going to get it done? They couldn't stand in a line for a long time. Disabled people having the same issue and of course our safety service people who are firefighters or, you know, have to, for instance, have to go shop for themselves, but then if they get a call, they're done. So, how are they going to do it? There's, so there are a lot of things going on and Cardenas Market, uh, came up with the, had a conversation yesterday and they, they called me this morning and, and said, "Look, this is what we're going to do, but it'll take us a, a day to implement it for the following day." So it's Thursday, they're going to open from 7:00 to 8:00 for seniors, um, disabled and , uh, safety, uh, first responders. Then I get flooded with questions as, you know, "Does that conclude me?" and "Why not nurses?" and "Why not teachers?" and "Why not..." Okay, I, I didn't make the rules, that's it. That's it. It's very, very simple. It's, you know, it's the senior citizens and, uh, disabled and, uh, first responders. And, uh, then you have to call them if you want an issue with that. Uh, that's, that's kind of it. Then I have had a lot of people on social media say, "Um, why weren't you prepared to do something for me quicker?" And, you know, I don't know how quickly we're supposed to respond. I think we, we responded as a city probably faster than most. Um, I'm fortunate that my good friend is involved at the top levels and was warning me a month ago and we all took that to heart and did something about it and started moving in this. So I think we caught it at the right time and we're moving forward and with everything, it's a daily learning curve. But I just want to say to people, this is a, a wake-up call for all of us and Debbie's been chanting this for years. Be prepared, be prepared. If this was a, a huge earthquake or a, you know, atomic explosion or asteroid, you wouldn't have your cell phones. You wouldn't have a supply chain that is actually full and just keeps resupplying every day. You wouldn't have that past the first couple of days. You wouldn't have roads in and out. You wouldn't have gas at every gas station. We're in a time where we have all of the resources that we're used to, but we're frenzied into, you know, maybe overpurchasing. But you must be prepared, and let this be the wake-up call to all of us, to be prepared for something that happens that we don't have the resources we actually have now. And like I said, Debbie's been preaching this for years. I do it because I think it's the right thing to do, to have stock piled stuff in your house all the time. And emergency equipment, not, uh, when, when Katrina hit, uh, my friend's, uh, city of, um, this, Gulfport, Mississippi, they were wiped off the planet. They didn't have electricity, they didn't have cell phones, they didn't have water, they didn't have anything. And, uh, if it were social services to come and rescue them, there weren't any. Everything was going to, um, New Orleans. They were left on their own. This community, San Bernardino County and this city, got together over $5 million worth of stuff, put it on trucks. Many of our firemen drove those trucks to Gulfport, Mississippi and literally saved them 10 days later. They had nothing coming from any higher up government, not from their state, not from the federal government. If we hadn't gone, they wouldn't have had anything. And believe me, that can happen to us, that can happen to us. So, we need to be personally prepared and not relying so heavily on, "What is the government going to do to help me in this moment?" I realize that that's what we want to believe in, but in the time that it happens, it's probably not going to be that available. So, just giving you a warning, folks. On top of that, I'd just like to say thank you for attending or watching. We appreciate your interest and we'll see you at our next regular meeting, which will still be on Tuesday, April 7th. This meeting is adjourned.